So, um, you, let's just do a roll call so we'll know who's here. Go ahead and start.
Um, Diane Christ, present.
In that council people, just she keying it out?
Just names, yeah. It's pre-session.
Oh, Sean McCoy.
Sean Beck. Diane, why don't you go first because of the last pre-session we had that was actually called by Harold and you wanted to update, so we'll just let you go first.
Okay. Okay, so talking about the train, what I wanted to mention was the North I-25 Coalition is still in existence, has gone virtual.
Oh, okay.
There's actually 114 people on the list, but not all were, you know, called in. And the big push for them is the FRPR, the Front Range Passenger Rail. I guess what was interesting to learn about that is 0.8% is the maximum sales tax that the state can ask for. But their study in 2020 indicated that 0.5% should be adequate, which we currently pay 0.4% for RTD. So, it might be if we could swap those dollars for the FRPR.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, then it might be a kind of a neutral effect. Um, so, anyway. That's mostly what I had to say.
Okay.
And then I handed out about the minimum wage that we're going to 14.42. So we're like fifth in the nation of the 23 states that changed the minimum rate. We're like fifth out of that and I don't think we want to exceed New York City in terms of minimum wage changes. I think they're at 16, so, just, just an observation, just what's going on in the country.
Okay.
All right, that's my two seconds of thing.
All right, thanks. Um, so, Sister Cities was canceled, so I didn't get a chance to go to that meeting. But this Thursday, we're having an annual, our annual meeting where we get to talk about all of our trips that we're gonna, you know, have and chaperoning to Japan. Uh, still, hopefully Thursday I'll know the dates for that. But the annual meeting is this Thursday. Um, and unfortunately, we would not be bringing a cohort back from Japan. So, for whatever reasons, I'm sure we'll hear about it on Thursday as to why that's not happening. Um, so the only meeting I really had was transportation meeting. Um, they hired a new coordinator and the coordinator will be starting January 27th for Vision Zero. So, yay!
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, and then next Thursday at the library, we will be having, they are having transportation mobility, uh, meeting at the library. Um, it's next Thursday and I think it's from 5:30 to 7:00.
Not this coming? Thursday? I, I, when people say next Thursday, I don't know if that's...
I don't think so. I think it's the 20, what's, is next Thursday?
Twenty-fifth?
I think so. Yeah, I haven't put the date down unfortunately.
Okay.
For me. And then on February the 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 is the winter bike, uh, well, you, I don't know how that's gonna work, but I don't bike like that, but anyway, um, that's what, the, February 9th is when you can bike to work, yeah. So they have the different stations throughout town, um, for people from 7:00 AM to 9:00. But I think the main thing is the, uh, new coordinator that's coming on January 27th for Vision Zero.
Good.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
When are they gonna open it up for the task force to meet?
Well, I'm pretty sure they're waiting until that coordinator gets settled and, you know...
So, for first day? Likely through Kyle and for...
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah, so we'll see. Hopefully soon. Yeah.
Once she gets her legs under.
Has any of been meeting at all?
Uh, we, we will be meeting towards the latter part of this month, I think. Um, I have it on my calendar, oh, yeah, we need, I think that's also on a Thursday. Man, that Thursday's gonna be a big Thursday, busy Thursday. But yeah, and we're meeting at a different location, um, only for this month. Next month it'll still stay in Adams County, at the Adams County, um, building.
Yeah.
Would you do me a favor and ask them something? Ask them if, um, FRPR has ever presented to them. I know that Phil asked, and I asked Andy if they could, FRPR, because we would like their support.
NADA is...
Northern Area Transportation Party. And it is a group that was formed along I-25, so it's just the nearest values that are I-25. Because I wanted at one point to bring Louisville in and they said they're not really on I-25. So, it's a different mindset, but we all work together. Okay. Thank you.
So, I started new on the Parks and Open Space Commission. And their first issue was having Price and Bryce, the two park creatures. They were updating us on new municipal codes for Chapter 13.20. And things around pallet craft and what that meant. And then, then, uh, some issues around trash and storage of items and how they were gonna... There were some folks that they didn't want to put trash and storage items and things like that in with also people spreading their family's remains in. That's, they were separating that out to add another amendment to it.
Who are you talking about? Is this, is this what you were talking about, composting bodies?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Oh, we're, we're doing that?
No, we're not doing that. We're, we're making sure that, that if you do that, because, you know, people will be out there trying to, to go to the golf course or to different places and drop off remains or on the trail to Button Rock or places like that. They'll, they'll, they'll spread the ashes of their loved ones.
Oh, God, I was thinking of chopped off fingers and...
No, 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 no. It's that sort of stuff. And then we had people that were doing, would use ammunition boxes for geocaching. And they had to bring in the SWAT team and stuff like that, the bomb squad for that. And they had people that would take metal things to do geocaching that looked like pipe bombs. So they finally got people to understand that if you wanted to do that, you had to put it in a clear, clear container so that it was not construed, you know, that it said, yeah, this is geocash type of thing, because of that. And then issues around camping and permitting, uh, you know, and, uh, the issue around sales of goods and services on public lands and stuff like that, so, you know, this is all going to come to us in council after they get a few of the things hammered out. There was a couple of things that we suggested that they, that the board suggested they change and they had to then take it back to, to the legal council, city legal council, and make sure that those things were appropriate. And then you, we'll see it here. Issues around, you know, wildlife. Then they had some issues around, uh, you know, the, the levels of the Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 electric bikes on some of the trails and everything. And then the last thing was charging people with, you know, changing the language of, of a ticket you may get that if you want to go ahead and pay it, you can and, you know, basically plead no contest like you do with your traffic tickets. But if you want it, that way, what they were finding is, is that people would come to court, Price and Bryce would come to court and have to, have to go and always show up to court, unlike our police officers that don't always show, have to show up to court because they're not, the, the tickets aren't being challenged or anything. And so instead, they're getting it so it's a little bit more in line with that sort of thing. But if you want to challenge it, you can, then they'll show up to court. And if you don't want to challenge it, then you can just pay the fine. Now, here are things from people out there. I heard my daughter say her friend went up to Button Rock and made the mistake of bringing their dog with them and it ended up, uh, they got a ticket, uh, not a warning, but a ticket for around $400. And you either paid the $400 or you went to court to see if you could get a, if you would get 90 days probation and then pay a hundred dollars. Well, like a lot of people, you don't want to put anything that would show that you had probation in the court system. So, you know, that's something we probably need to look at a little bit to see how, how steep that fines. We certainly don't want people up there with dogs after we told them not to. And I'm sure we've got plenty of signage up there, but, but it's something to, to realize that we've got to probably keep that in mind. So there's some issues around, around that. And the, the levels of fines, like the first offense, a hundred dollars, second offense for certain things, $200 and so on and so forth. I don't think this person that I, my daughter was telling me about had been like the third offense. So I think it was like...
That was their first offense?
It was first offense, it was pretty high.
Wow.
So, it's something that, you know, I'd have to look at specifically to see what they were getting written for other than having a dog with them on the trail of Button Rock. So that's...
Yeah, especially before we discuss that, find out what the details...
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's going through legal. Make sure that it's all, you know, in line with other departments that issue tickets and that type of thing. And so, so then in December, I had a meeting with the Consortium of Cities. And that was pretty interesting. We went to the emergency unit where they, whenever they have a serious emergency, maybe I'm repeating myself, they have these screens that are larger than that computer, I mean, that big screen there. Six of them around the room or eight of them around the room and you can, so you can see the different maps and the different things that are going on in different areas. They've got, you know, computers that are just designated to, you know, panel collection. So somebody who mans that from the county, another one around, you know, different varieties of, of problems. They run scenarios, they run what they call a fishbone of every incident. So what, and, and do some practice incident, uh, you know, delegation so that people kind of know what their part is and how they're, you know, distributing materials. So, that was to a, to a site and where the incident command starts and everything and where they fall back to. It's just really, really interesting. And it's, it's in South Boulder over near the airport, so it's kind of an interesting place to check out. It's over near the jail. But it's, if you get a chance, check it out, it's, it's got some cool features to it.
Okay.
Hey, can I add one thing? The one that came up on my calendar is February 1st for the transportation mobility.
Yeah, I was going to tell you that it's February, it's on a Thursday, I was half right.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, it's February 1st.
But February 1st, 5:30 to 7:00.
What, what is that?
That's a transportation mobility...
Plan where they have an open house.
Forum, yeah, I think it's open. But also I wanted to add on to what you were saying, Sean, and that in transportation, we always talked about red light cameras. And the engineers have always said, you get a lot of backlash from the, you know, citizens that they, you know, they, anyway, a lot of contested situations, so it's, it's almost better just to have law enforcement catch them than with light cameras because, you know, that, that no contest is a, is a problem, you know? People feel like they need to have a day in order, they need to have their...
Well, we seem to be having fine results in Fort Collins and in Boulder. They, they must not have too much of that going on because they're, they're, they keep them around and expand on them. So, and about a year or so ago, my daughter got one in Fort Collins. So, I'm thinking, okay, I'm thinking that there's probably some value to it. It's just around the idea of how expensive each one is, like some $30,000, $40,000. Maybe I've got that low by...
Yeah, it's like, council gave this direction to look at that before and it's, um, it's like $40,000 of light hole or some version, so it's pretty expensive. Um, there's some other things occurring in the state legislature on some of these issues, so they're, they're looking into it again. From a public safety standpoint, when we look at the number of crashes that we have at intersections, I think, you know, if we can manage the cost, it makes sense to make people aware of them because even if you don't generate a lot of tickets, it's really about stopping those folks that are blowing through the lights based on the amount of T-bones that we have. But they're trying to figure out the cost.
This is our worst accident problem intersection is Nelson and Holbrook.
Um, I don't think it is anymore. 66 and Main is one.
66 and Main.
17th and, 17th and Main is another one. I think maybe now the view of Pace is one. We, so, our, some of our most significant accidents now are people running red lights. The challenge is it's almost impossible to have, obviously, all of these intersections. And so that's the utility in it, but we're trying to figure out the cost.
Maybe Vision Zero will help with that some of the, also.
Susie, do you have a minute? I mean, do you need a minute or two to get...
Yeah, is there somebody else who wants to...
Me, I'll come. So, the first thing I want to say is that I have the ethics thing done, the ethics code. I sent it to somebody to edit it and make sure that, I mean, format it, make sure that I have all of the ones, twos, A, B, C's in the correct order. And then, are you still willing to edit it, Susie? You know, I'll send it to Susie and then it'll go to you. And then it'll come to us in pre-session and everybody edit and decide whether you like the way it says or what it doesn't say. And then they'll go back to the drawing board or it'll all be okay. So, I'm happy that's done. Also, there's been a lot of input from, the Colorado Sun did a thing on all of the utility companies as they were moving forward and in, to meet the state's greenhouse gas emissions timetable. And PRPA was at the bottom. So there was a lot of backlash, a lot of backlash for that. And that PRPA is not meeting goals and standards, et cetera. So, I reached out to another mayor and actually Javier from PRPA sent out a news release as to what that was about. I can send it if you're interested. But I got another mayor, Jenny Art, from Fort Collins. I got her input on it just because sometimes I think, maybe I'm not understanding it correctly? So here's what she wrote. She said, "PRPA is following all laws. The law set an interim goal and also said that for entities not reaching that new, that new goal in 2027, they need to file their plan with the state for reaching the 2030 goal, which PRPA has done. And it is on target to reach the 2030 goal. Um, the transition is not smooth. We did, according to the Colorado Sun, they feel that we are at a place where we can't in three years, well, it'll be two years now, meet the 2027 goal. But there's nothing really definite saying we can't. So, it is still our goal, but we put in a plan to meet it for 2030. I do have some questions I'm gonna ask at the next meeting and I'll let you know what that is all about. So, there's a lot of, a lot of talk going around PRPA, which is, in a way, I'm glad. So I just got an email, Susie, that the formatting is done, so I'll just send you that and code edits. Um, the other thing is, shoot. The Historic Commission Board is, it's interesting that they are gonna have their retreat the same time that the council retreat, same day, same place, same time. But I think we're now in the process of changing that. I think it's gonna be on the 17th.
Correct.
So, we found that at the, out at the board and I thought, well, hold on. We're using that room same day, same time because we get priority, so they changed that around. Um, that's an interesting board to be on and I'm glad I'm on it. I can't really report much because it was only the first meeting and they were kind of, we were looking at the new year and what they were gonna do and so at the retreat, I'll learn more specifically since it was the first one. I think that's about it. That's all I've got. No, Front Range Passenger Rail District. Okay. There's also a lot of talk about FRPR and there's a lot of support. But as Diane had said, the taxes for F, for RTD and FRPR, if they both go into effect, that's gonna be about 0.9% for us just for rail. So that's, that is one of the reasons that we need to look at RTD very closely and say, we can't do this. You're either gonna, you're either gonna build it or you're not. Because we need to have our service delivery plan, the SDP, done by April or May. That RTD has no plans, and I talked to our director, Eric Davidson, last week. We have, RTD has no plans for a path forward for Front Range Passenger Rail, none. They haven't made any input on it at all. So, I think it's only fair to the residents that, um, that we look at and say, FRPR is the real deal. It's a real railroad operator. It's a real VNSF, it's a real railroad. RTD is not. They, they never have made plans to do the Front Range Passenger Rail. I'm very sorry, I said that wrong. To, they never made plans to build or complete the Northwest Corridor in the 20 years we've been on. And at 2050, it'll be 46 years. I personally cannot be deceived and say that's okay. So, that'll be another meeting. And I've also been doing some research on it. I think there is a way in my, in professional legal, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I just pretend to be, so... Yeah, at pre-session. Um, so that's it. These are, these are all pretty heavy duty things, I think. Uh, the other things, I sent to both Harold and Zach that the Supreme Court is hearing sometime this week. If they haven't already, I haven't kept up with it. The ordinances and the issues on homelessness. And the, the things that I've read about and heard is that they want to undo all ordinances on homelessness that local municipalities and counties have been put in place for not arresting, that you can arrest homeless people.
This is the Colorado Supreme Court?
No, I think this is the general, but, um, no, Colorado wouldn't do that. I'm not exactly sure of the, the details of that, but I think we should keep our eye on it because it's, it's going to affect us, definitely going to affect us. There's also been some legislators working on a universal healthcare bill for Colorado. We now have a bill number for that, so I'm gonna ask Sandy to bring that forward so that we can read it. Let me, let me tell you what the bill number is and you can look it up if you're interested. I don't know if it's on my phone. Because I want to testify. So we need to have a, a good discussion on council about, is this something that we want to support or not?
Is there a date set for hearings?
Not yet. Right now, they're looking for different organizations, individuals, we'll write those to the editor. But at I, at this point, I don't know. If I do, I want to write it as a bear and I can't do that unless the council adopts this and supports it. So the answer is no. So, it looks like my folder didn't come out on my phone, it's only on my laptop. So I can't, I'll send you that though.
Is it Act 4 concerning the analysis of universal healthcare system?
It's the same bill that we supported last year.
Okay, and that was House Bill 231209.
Yeah, but...
But this has been an issue, the one that was sponsored by McCormick?
Yes, and Marsham, and, um, right now, what, you know what happened to that last one? That last bill? It was, it was sent to the committee, but the committee chair didn't pull it and read it because he didn't understand it. He kept putting it on the bottom of the pile.
Oh, okay.
So, it never made it to committee.
Never made it, got it.
And then I guess Karen was furious, but the guy had said...
Okay, that sounds familiar.
Once she explained it to him that it wasn't to actually, it was only to study other states that had universal healthcare, was it working, how did they get through, you know, the ins and outs of...
Okay.
Well, now they can't, Florida's found that they can't do the, the valuation software that they were using to determine which bills came forward and had priority. So, maybe Eugene, you have some input on that to explain if anybody didn't understand that.
I thought it was an open meeting issue.
Yeah, that's...
That it was, you know, public policy meeting, but not a level of anxiety.
Does it prioritize which bills got invited today?
Right, and that one, yeah.
House Bill 241075. So we were just at the meeting where I was at, we were discussing that.
Oh, okay.
So I just didn't have it on this notebook.
I made a folder for it on my laptop because I was getting all these emails. Didn't come on my phone for some reason. So that, that's all I've got, Susie.
So, well, I have, so library is meeting next week. So I had already updated council from the last meet time we met. The museum advisory board is tomorrow. I had already updated you all for that. Um, Archab will be, this will be, this month will be my first meeting with them. They meet the fourth, um, the fourth Wednesday. Um, and then our public places meets on Thursday. So this will be my first meeting with them as well. However, I do have a couple of updates. One with the youth council. They are interested and wanted to collect council feedback. I kind of mentioned a little bit about this before, but to actually have a round table with city council and youth council. Um, you know, one of the things that I was talking to folks about is, you know, maybe coming up with questions that they would have for us and that we can, can answer. So, you know, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there to see if there was interest. I mean, we'd have to set it up ahead of time, have it open to the public and because it would be... I mean, we'd have to set it up ahead of time, have it open to the public and, because it would be from our side, you know, having to have an open meeting. So if there is interest in that, we can kinda work out dates and times and... I like that idea. I think, uh, more boards need to talk to each other, not just the council. So it'd kinda nice to invite other related boards to...
Yes, and so, and this one would be led by high schoolers.
So fun.
So that, um, yes, and, you know, some of them have really invested interest in local politics and, um, you know, they're, they have a lot of good, good questions, very positive rules. So, um, I will let them know.
Okay.
And then we can get the ball rolling on that component. So in addition to the other boards and commissions, I also sit on the Core and Leads Steering Committee. And we had our meeting last Friday, and I just, I felt that it was very prudent to bring forward the information we're talking, talking about on this. So, you know, there, we do have an annual report that will be sent public and I'll forward it to Dawn, or I'll let Dawn know once that comes and see if she can forward it to, to the rest of council.
Okay.
As well as newsletters. One of the things that we felt over the last year and a half that we've been, that I've been meeting with them, with getting this information out to the public and really having people understand what the dynamics of Core and Leads. I know I've, I've heard from constituents and, um, and being in a place where we've had Core come out to our house. And, you know, and it can be intimidating if you don't understand, you know, because there are, you know, there were four individuals there, and, you know, they have their vests for protection, and it looks intimidating. However, there's only one that is a police officer. You have your Core, you know, your Core person who's also an officer there as well, um, social worker, you know, clinician. And so it's a lot of mental health people. So, ha- by having them come and talk to my son, he was really diverting from jail and having him, you know, calm down, you know, when he's having a meltdown or getting very accelerated. And, you know, and he's six foot, so it's, we can't, we can't restrain him. I mean, when he was little and he could have, you know, a meltdown, we'd, I'd be able to wrap him in his blanket to the burrito thing. And, um, I can't do that now that he's an adult. So being able to, to call somebody who can work with him and, and calm him down rather than going to the ER or having, having him arrested, you know, so that, that kinda piece. And really helping the public to understand that it's not a bad thing when they come to your door and how to, how to utilize that service. So, um, so we were kind of, you know, one of the ideas was to have the newsletter that comes out and kinda update the public on that. So we have those going, and I can share those with you as well. One of the things that, um, you know, as we were discussing with Emily Van Dorn?
Dorn.
Dorn, is that right? Um, yes. She was mentioning that as far as statistics-wise, forty percent increase in case referrals to Core and Leads with fifteen percent increase in connectivity with unhoused. So when I think about, you know, legislators or Supreme Court making these rulings, the impact that it has on services that we're already providing can be, you know, have a negative impact. And, you know, we're working with unhoused individuals to get them in that correct line of service. So I think the work that we're doing with the Impact Teams and Core and Leads team that I think we're making positive headway in addressing this. It just, it takes time. And then it also, um, breaking down those barriers and, um, and perceptions that people have, these biases that people have towards seeing police, um, presence and, um, kind of breaking down that. And I, you know, I think, so that, that's kinda one of the things that we've been discussing as, as a group and, and how we wanna address that moving forward. So on the team, we have different representatives, you know, from UCD Health, from, um, we have someone from the DA, DA's office, Ken Cupner. He met with us when we were dealing with the Pooter, or not the Pooter, um, the Purdue, sorry. Purdue issue. So that's where I met him before, okay? And I knew that I had seen him, that I finally connected the two. We have Andy Feaster, who's, um, the Core, Core Team Leads for Public Safety and as well as a paramedic, Omar Nargasi. I think I'm saying these names right. So that, you know, they, we have, you know, just not within the city, but other community agencies involved in this work. One of the questions that we're cut, uh, working to address for this next quarter is, "Are we as trauma-informed as we think we are?" So we're evaluating, evaluating that. I think we're, you know, operating on a lot of assumptions. You know, one of the things that, um, was brought up and from the DA's office is work that's happening in the jail and then conversations that I've had with the County Commissioner, Ashley Stoltman, about money going towards expanding the jail. And I think, you know, really, okay, what are we, what are we, why? So, you know, well, let's, let's look at, what, what are we looking to address? Are we looking to address mental health? So if we're looking to address mental health, are, are we wanting to go the jail avenue or are we wanting to provide services? So that's why we really, we really need to know how much money we're getting from that, um, is it, not fentanyl, is it fentanyl money? Opioid?
Opioid.
Opioid money. So getting that dollar amount because there are opportunities for us to be able to tap in to, um, you know, if we do something, we're expanding the jail or maybe have like an in-between where people are transitioning out of the jail system because maybe it's mental health-related, drug, drug addiction-related, and transitioning them into something that has more wraparound services that address needs. One of the issues that we discussed and I, I talked to this, spoke to this is, you know, the human mind is not a silo. There are many different aspects, whether it's mental disability in line with, um, mental disorder along with drug addiction. So there's multiple things, but we have service providers that maybe specialize in, um, mental illness, but not the other. Or they, uh, they can deal with, um, you know, mental disabilities, but they can't deal with, you know, drug addiction. If there's somebody who's disabled who has a drug addiction, how do you deal with, streamline those two services? So it's less about there are not, there are no beds available. It's finding, um, people who can provide those services in these facilities. So kind of filling in those, those gaps. Have you, have you thought about reentry initiative? That's what they do. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, because we were, um, so we were analyzing our processes and how we can collect feedback from people who've been, who went through the process. You know, one of the things that, and, you know, it's like, Facebook is toxic, I'm sorry, but I have, you know, I feel like, okay, it's kinda good to know what people are saying, but some of the things that people are saying, you know, the complaints, I, I read one piece and I, you know, I wanna try to find a way to reach out to that individual, but I can't find their real name. But, you know, complaining about how the Core Team needs to be disbanded and, you know, the bad interaction, it was like, well, we really wanna come, you know, let's, let's find out why that, that bad interaction is happening and, and what, what was it? Was it perception, you know, because your perception is your reality. So was it a perceived issue that, you know, we, you kinda wanna navigate that piece? Uh, I think by the time things come to council, they've already exhausted all other measures or they're just wanting to complain. So how can we elicit, um, you know, a streamlined system where people can provide specific feedback that would help us as an organization improve what the Core and Leads team is doing? I think from my own personal experience, I've not had bad experience. And this is talking about years before I was on council. So it's not like they're giving me specialized treatment. It's like they didn't know what to do, you know, back in 2017 or 2016. So, um, so I think just getting that education piece out there as well as giving people an opportunity to provide feedback. Um, so those were some of the big things that we were talking about. I think staffing is also a challenge. Is that's, you know, so what do, what do we do to get more people in? If we're trying to move people from patrol to Core Team, but we don't have new people coming into patrol, we can't, you know, can't share this.
With psychologists, there's a shortage of...
Yes.
Of people that are qualified to actually be that caseworker manager and psychologist on, on site in general.
And so then, you know, it gets us thinking, okay, we need to go back even farther to, you know, the educational institutions where people are, you know, what's, what's happening? And are people even going to school for these things? And not, much less applying for these, for these roles. So how can we connect with area universities and schools to...
Well, we're seeing, we're seeing that, that, the pay, if you go to the Bureau, the Bureau of Statistics will tell you that it's one for the amount of school that you need to have to accomplish this. There's no, uh, it's a forty-year payback, correctly.
Yeah, the cost of school.
The cost of the pay, yes. It is. It is.
It's not even close.
Yeah.
It's easier if you're already on that path and then you're just adding on, you know, saying education.
And that's, and that's kind, that's as far as the Core Team goes. They're looking at patrol, you know, moving people from patrol who have, who gained that experience and then just move them over to, um, the Core Team. But it's finding the patrol staffing, so actually finding officers to come in is one of the challenges. So that recruitment piece, or even retention, because there are people who say, "Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll join, join on," and then they, they end up not. They took a job somewhere else.
Just for my education, is that in that?
Of course, so yes, it is.
Oh, it's a precession, but I'm so sorry.
Help me with the Core Team acronym.
I'm sure this was part of my orientation.
No.
They probably just said Core.
Well, that's a lot to take in there.
It is, it is. So, yeah, I can, I can pull that up. Do you know what?
Oh, okay. And it's, uh, response, T, U, N, S, R, E, S, R, E.
Response is in the word somewhere.
That's right. What is Core word?
Core, what's that?
What is that?
Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement. There's, I knew response. I didn't know anything else. Do you, um, was that the only one that you, I have, I have to report on, or is there?
Um, so it was the...
Library, the...
They're all meeting this week or at the end of the month. So it was just Youth Council and Core is what I had. But, um, I feel like it's important that council knows.
Oh, I'm glad.
Especially as we are approving or setting priorities. You know, I wanna make sure that, that this organization, how we, how we've operated with this lens is, stays funded.
And Core reaches so many things, the LHA, maybe health partners, um, the residents, I mean, it's very, very...
Leeds is a separate group?
Yes. Lead, Lead, do you have the acronym for Lead? I, there's too much stuff for my brain.
So one's more crisis and more, one's more kind of that transition indication management?
Yes. Law enforcement, assisted diversion. Diversion. And then the Angel just stood with the drug.
Yes. And if I can add to some of what Mayor Torquem is saying, that's the group that has come in in terms of another center of excellence to where they've all met. So Christina convene, Core, Lead, Senior Services, Housing, Youth Services, anywhere where there's a mental health touch, and they're starting to work on building that center of excellence. So they're now not operating in kind of the silence, which historically has occurred, and there's more moving to integrated operation, which will tie into the three clinicians of council that are figuring the budget that we have in the house. One's on the housing authority side, two are the marijuana funds, all of the all house together that support the broader, um...
And there's also going to be a collaboration with the school district. That was also brought, so they're gonna be allocating, um, you know, clinician, uh, FTE to be able to work with schools. I think it's ATLAM one time? I have that in mind.
Yeah, I think that, that clinician will kind of work with the SRO generally.
Yes.
And they may be housed somewhere, but if there's a situation that don't move to that location and then we find that this is really working, then the school district will start funding more of these clinicians to go into other schools.
Is, um, mental health partners fully staffed?
That's probably gonna tie into the next conversation.
Yeah, I assume it would.
But, um, yeah, definitely some struggles.
And then we need quarterly, so our next meeting, March, April. Yeah.
Um, I forgot. I had an email, I got an email today. Um, I don't, I, I've talked about this oddly, ooh, over the summer. I don't remember. But the life skills...
Oh, yes. I was gonna ask you about that.
Yes, yes, yes. So the life skills, um, I call it the Life Skills Carnival. I don't know what, what the kids are gonna call it or children, the families are gonna call it. But I got an email today asking, they're getting ready to put, they're working on the marketing for it. And they're going to create an Instagram reel to promote the event, which will be in April at the Fairgrounds, which the two, uh, Commissioner, Ashley and Martha, were the ones who supported it. And we got this, you know, covered and, um, Christina has really been working really hard and Hilda and, um, is it Giselle? Giselle?
Giselle.
Giselle?
Yes, close.
Close. Okay. I didn't get a chance to meet her when we first started all of this. So, I mean, I can't remember. I have met her. I'm sorry. I have met her. Anyway, um, so they wanna schedule a time where we, where we, they'll have the students, the kids, the kids at the center, and then all of us to be a part of this video, this Instagram video.
Oh, nice.
For the life skills. So for, for you, Diane, the life skills is about teaching the young teenagers and kids how to change a tire, how to tie a tie, just regular life skill things that I know probably our age group, we knew those things. We had to learn those things. And so kids nowadays, you know, everything is on your phone and there's no practical learning. It's just trying to figure it out through your phone or, or YouTube videos, which there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. But it also brings the community together. So like Ace Hardware said, "Let us know what you need," because at the end, whatever the life skills that we are able to do that day, I would like to create a basket. Like if someone shows them how to thread a needle or have a basket with a needle or wrench in it and all those things that they learn at the life skills, I call it carnival. I don't know what they're gonna call it. Just have communal businesses, local businesses come together and, and teach these kids how to, just some regular skills that we, some of us know, some of us don't. Like I don't know how to tie a tie, but, um, but yeah, how to turn on the stove, you know? How to wash your clothes. I don't know if we're gonna do that. I let them decide on what it was because I had a whole list of things that were like, Shikida, we not gonna have time to do all that. But, um, but that's okay. And what we can do, we will do. And I'm totally excited about it, and it's going to be in April. I don't have the, we don't have the date yet, but it will be at the Fairgrounds. So the commissioners approved that, uh, for us to utilize that space at the Fairgrounds for our life skills. Yes.
So when you say "they" are gonna do the marketing, who is the "they"?
The children, youth and families of, yeah, yeah. So, uh, she want, they want to get it done by the end of the month. So they wanna have the video done by the end of the month so they can start marketing.
Is Erica doing that video? No, it was, there are two or three Ericas here, so...
No, Erica, Erica Elliott's or took a job.
Oh, she's in.
Yeah, she took a job with another organization, so...
I'll send it.
They're probably working, I don't know, they're working with it.
Yeah.
Really liked her.
Yeah, I know.
Get some teens to do a TikTok.
I know. TikTok and Instagram, that'd be good. And then also we're gonna get a new, I forgot to mention this. I don't have a meeting with DDA until latter, uh, the twenty-fourth. But, um, we're getting a new pizza place. I can't remember the name of it. But the guy on Main Street, and he is also in, um, up the mountains.
Lyons?
No.
Estes?
Estes Park. He said he sells six hundred pizzas a day. And so New York-style pizzas, yes.
Is that the one in, uh, in Allen's Park?
I don't, I don't...
Is there a new one that's really, um...
So Longmont, we are, we're, we are truly lucky to have him to come on Main Street.
I wonder if he called me. I gotta call from Estes Park, and I an- I answered, but nobody was...
So he'll be on Main Street. We're gonna get a new, uh, deli on Main Street. The Magic Ferry people, uh, bought the building or whatever, so they're gonna have a, a deli right next door to it.
Okay.
Yeah, which is right across from Chiva Hut, which is kinda weird, but it's gonna work. So... But I'm excited about the pizza. I'm like, hey, I, you know, if you don't do gluten-free, I don't, I'm not gluten-sensitive, but if you, it would be appreciative if you did do gluten-free and also vegan. Like, I don't have to have no vegan cheese. Just give me some veggies and you're good. So, I forgot to tell you all, they said in spring, so hopefully by April, both the, that both of those businesses should be up on Main Street, so... should be up on Main Street.
Then T.O. Cowley is opening up.
Yeah, that one too.
What is?
T.O. Cowley.
What is that?
Harold's excited for that one. It's, it's kind of like, the base, basically it's kind of a more of a Californian max.
Oh, okay.
They're in Lafayette and then they're in Ibata, I think. Harold's excited for that because Harold's wife's excited for that.
Where are they gonna be?
The old Guitar et cetera building.
Oh, okay, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, they're pretty busy in Lafayette. If you don't, if you don't have reservations, it's hard to get a walk up in there.
Really?
Where?
Lafayette.
Okay. You know, you have to have reservations to go to Suelo's, correctly.
Really?
I got it.
Got him on camera, okay.
That's, that's over.
Tiki Head.
The Tiki Head over near, where the old Outback was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Good for them though.
People complain, we don't have a good place to eat in this town. Well.
Well, they're very people. They're very people.
People?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not people. So upcoming events, it isn't, it isn't cement yet, but we're planning, David Hornbacher and I talked about as well is Javier from PRPA, a tour of the PRPA solar panels, where they have all their solar panels, as well as the coal plant that is going to go out of commission. Because I think it's really important to see what we are actually doing, you know, hands-on type of stuff. So hopefully about, depending upon whether it's March or April, probably April.
Is that wrong?
I always think of Bonanza when you say that.
And you, did you speak to the legislative breakfast that we attended?
Yes, I was there.
Yeah. No, did you get a chance to talk to council?
No, no.
Because I went to that, it was interesting.
It was, it was interesting. I, go ahead.
I had never gone to one, so I didn't know what to expect. But, you know, we heard from the governor, you know, really the top three priorities, climate, transportation and housing.
Right.
However, my thought is, but I didn't really hear anything concrete.
No, nothing.
And what are they gonna do to help municipalities achieve those goals? Rather than, you know, because I see it with the education all the time, unfunded mandates.
That's what Phil and I were looking at each other. Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Whereas before, so yeah, yeah, yes. And allow us to get it done, also not, not micromanage us.
It's really, it's fun to go because you can network and people are there, but, yeah, it's, it's a lot of, what have we achieved? Which I think is really good because we complain a lot in all of those areas about what we need to do. So that part of it was really good. This is what, this is what Community Solutions has done over the past year. And then it's always interesting to listen to the governor. He's very excited about all of it, but.
No teeth in it. That's it. I just, I wanted to, I was waiting to hear something specific.
That he would say, and to make this happen, we are going to. And that wasn't part of it. So we're just really back to, basically what he says is, this is what I want all of you to do.
But we need the funding and we need, you know, just the respect that we know what we're doing for our locality. Let us do what we have to do.
It's always interesting to walk out with, like, Joni Marsh and she says, we only knew what planning went through to get there.
Yeah.
Okay. It was good. I like seeing everything.
It was good. So, yeah, so if anybody has, can, I think it was open to council or I just invited myself, I don't know. Because I've done that too. I just show up.
Yeah, because the city's a member of, yeah, the city's a member of you, so we should still request you to go. Yeah. So see you there next year, Diane. So that, that is it. Does you have something else that you want to throw out there?
Okay. Like, I'm trying to go through the change.
So I'm glad it hasn't happened.
Okay. It was very cold, okay. So if we're done, at least you have something else you want to.
Well, I had heard that the governor is kind of pushing for the point eight percent tax for the Front Range passenger rail. But I feel like we've already done our point four percent.
Right.
You know, without any. Any, yeah, well, without any product coming to us.
And that, and that point has been made with the FRPR board and they're very well aware of that because we're not the only ones. There are three other communities or I guess counties that have been promised rail and haven't gotten it and won't. But what FR, one of the things that we're batting around is doing a segmented rail and you don't pay the taxes until your segment is being built. Will that give us enough money to start? We don't know. So again, there are all kinds of interesting things, discussions, I guess. And how do you put that on a ballot measure? Because they're so hard to read and to understand from a general public's point of view. So the marketing has to be great. The other thing is that Faith Winters is in charge of redoing our TV, coming up with some big fiscal ideas for transportation in general. And she did, they are taking into account my, my point of having a transportation fee for everybody in the state and especially, or an event fee for, you know, if you're gonna go skiing and you're from Texas, you have to pay for roads as well and you're gonna be using them. So it would be so much of the under chip it.
Faith Winters is the new RTD director?
No, Faith Winters is a senator, a state senator. And she's been on transportation for a long, a long time. But when the governor broke up his land use bill into three sections of land use, transportation and housing, he put her on the transportation part, all under the land use umbrella when two thirteen, up in smoke.
So do you have just a minute or two before they come in? Nope, I was just trying to, trying to figure out, looking at time. No, I'm sorry.
If we're adjourning, then we can let them come in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So are we, we are adjourning, yeah.